Good evening. I call this work session the Westfield Elementary School Board of Trustees to order. Thank you for being here. At this time, I would like to welcome Mr. Jerry Rolfsen from Performance Service. Thank you, thank you. Service who will provide an overview of the Westfield Elementary School project.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm happy to be here to provide an overview of the Westfield Elementary School project for you tonight. And with that, I'll go ahead and begin. We've been busy at work on this project for quite some time, and these are going to be the agenda items for this evening. We'll talk about project core goals, the planning, schedule for the project, programming, concept development. We'll do a building design overview, site design overview. Project construction phasing will be our wrapping up topic. It'll be primarily me doing the overview tonight, but I do have one other participant in that presentation. It'll be Greg Wade with Context Design. He'll cover largely the site design components of it. We also have other representatives of our team here tonight as well. To start off with the project core goals, really before we began anything, we decided that really we needed to organize our approach to this and understand what the core goals of the project would be. And I've identified those for you. Those were to accommodate the grade realignment structure for the district, of course, establishing five-section school, K through five elementary school, currently the intermediate school, but transitioning that facility as a part of the district's goals for the district to push sixth graders to the middle schools and fifth graders to the elementary schools. Establish equitable educational space for the facility with the new facilities and because it's not a new facility, consider it twins, not identical, but fraternal. Develop grade level learning communities, much like the new buildings will have. Provide optimal learning environment, temperature, indoor air quality, humidity, lighting, and noise, so developing and enhancing the environment of the facility. Develop age-appropriate playground and improved green space. Improve site traffic, pickup, drop-off flow, and parking. And during the transition year, accommodate the district's sixth graders along with that K through five elementary school that will be coming in the 26, 27 school year. As a part of that, make sure that those K through five elementary students would be able to move into their learning community, so those will be established, and so that that staff would not have to transition out of those in a following year. And to keep the sixth grade teams together, so there's four classes per team, and we really wanted a goal of keeping those teams together so that those staff and students would be able to collaborate as a team. So we started this process really in February of 2024. It was really the orientation. We spent the first portion of the year really developing programming content, establishing the goals that I just mentioned, gathering information about those facilities. And we kind of moved slowly really at first because the two new elementary schools were still in the design process at that time, and we wanted to make sure that they had a chance to finish their programming and overall design components before we really kind of dove in and then started to see how those might overlay into the intermediate school. So the first part of the year was really kind of a slow approach. Then we started to develop concepts, explore concepts, establish budgets, ultimately solidifying a design towards the end of the year that we wanted to move towards. Then in 2025, that's really been about developing the design. And so, and there's a piece of the project, as you'll learn tonight, that has already advanced. So we have some site work and some building construction actually ongoing in the facility because we needed to begin that work in order to be ready for that transitional year that's coming up next year. Ultimately, the entire project bids, designs, and all that will be completed, presented to the board before the end of the year so that it can be implemented starting in the spring of 2026. Before we did anything, we really needed to overlay the programming for the facility. The programming, we needed to understand the programming for the facility to make sure that we had equity with the new facilities. And so, I just have a snapshot there of a couple of space programs. Those are where we apply the program elements that are needed for the facility, establish target square footages for those. And you see there, there's an elementary school program that mimics the program that is established for the new elementary schools. And then there's a transitional year program. That's, we had to understand also what needs were going to be overlaid on the transitional year with keeping the sixth grade in the facility. So those two pieces were really established before we really put any pen to the paper, if you will, in terms of developing concepts. And following, once we had that programming information solidified, we started to explore design concept scenarios. There were four or five, I think, that we really started with. I think you can see there were two and four maybe snaps there from those two scenarios on the page. Ultimately, those led to a preferred approach. And as we typically see with exploring concepts, usually you're drawing on kind of the best pieces of all the scenarios that you develop, and not just in the building, but on the site. As you know, the site's a very complex site. It's got a lot of students on it currently. It's going to improve with reduced student load with the elementary school, which does help. And we'll talk a little bit more about that as we kind of move forward. Once we had a direction from design, we really, this is where you kind of share how the grade level communities fit within this facility. The new facilities have learning communities that are centered around a commons. And although this facility doesn't have the ability to have a commons for each grade level community, the makeup of the existing building is really well-suited for grade level communities. In fact, secure communities like the new facilities will have. And so, each one of the grade levels actually fits within a wing very well, and there is enough square footage within those wings that can accommodate program functions, not within a commons, but within additional classroom space, that give you equity in programming, just not in the form of a commons. And so, I'll share a little bit more about that here in just a second.
Where are the sixth grade classrooms?
So, the sixth, there'll be another slide for sixth grade classrooms here in just a moment. There's a separate slide that indicates the transitional year programming, so that's forthcoming. And one of the nice things about this facility, because it has have a large amount of square footage to satisfy the programming that currently have, it gives it a great amount of flexibility for programming for an elementary school. And so, there are a lot of amenities with that square footage that allow you to have additional collaboration space within learning communities, and large shared function spaces that serve well for community functions. So, a trio of space with a gymnasium, cafeteria, and multipurpose room is a really nice area of shared space that can be made use of after hours and separated from the academic zone in addition to the support that it gives students during the school day. And just to talk a little bit about the secure learning communities, each one of those classroom wings, if you will, already is isolated on its own with a pair of doors. So, much like a learning community is secured in the new facilities, these are also, will also have the ability to be secured from the rest of the building, where students will really stay in those communities until they're leaving for exploratory or other purposes during the day. And you have the core block of classrooms, so there's five sections. Those are the five kindergarten classrooms you see there. And then a flex room that allows for, if there are bubbles in attendance during a school year, enrollment during a school year, you can kind of flex up into that space if needed. Or if for some reason the district grows and there's a need to fill that completely, you have that flexibility. But it's targeted as a five-section facility. In addition to that, then you have intervention space, that's the ELL-LIT INT space, and project room as a part of each one of the core classroom, or core classroom wings or grade level core unit. So, you have eight rooms afforded to each one of those grade levels. And then, there's a rendering there. The building is, is not just getting reprogrammed, it's really being renovated top to bottom. So, we're touching at virtually every square inch of that building, either with infrastructure, certainly with finishes. A big part of the project is rebranding the school, not just to become an elementary, not just to become Westfield Elementary, but be rebranded as a Westfield school with the Westfield school colors, with standardization of finishes and materials that are like or equal to the finishes that will be in the new facility. So, that standardization is very important to the district for a lot of different reasons: maintenance, image, and upkeep. And this is just another image of a piece of the building, the second grade ring. You can see how those program spaces overlay into that portion of the wing. In the corridors where there are lockers currently, those will be removed, and that does allow us to do kind of a little special treatment of that, where we can create some alcoves, either seated alcoves, or they're just alcoves that can be served, serve as breakout areas for one-on-one collaboration or group collaboration outside of the classroom as often needed for the students and the staff. And inside the classroom, I think the important thing to talk about here is every classroom is being remodeled to mimic the new classroom standard in the district. So, that includes the latest in technology, so viewsonic boards, voice lift systems, a brand-new intercom system in the building that has the latest safety features that allows intercom to interface with classroom technology and provide the highest degree of safety that's possible with those types of systems. Furniture is going to be consistent across new facilities in the district, and so it'll be flexible furniture. There won't be fixed furniture in classrooms. It will be modular so that you have the ability to reconfigure classrooms as is needed for programming purposes, and to support the project-based learning that is typical in the classroom environment today. And this is just a second image of that classroom to see how that kind of gets reshaped within the building. This is the transition year plan. So, this shows, after we achieved programming the building for the transition to the elementary school, then we came back and said, let's overlay the sixth grade in the facility. And it actually works out very nicely, where we're able to keep teams of sixth graders together in blocks, so that blocks of four, and you can see there's eight teams of sixth graders. And so, we're able to really keep consistently through the building those teams together so that they can continue to collaborate and maintain their own identity within that building. Of course, those students will be used to being in that facility because they're, they're there as fifth graders now, they'll be there as sixth graders in the following year. One thing, as we kind of move into some of the three-dimensional and design components for this facility, I do want to show, point out, Phase One is currently in progress, and that is moving the current library media center to a new location that will make way for new categorical and mosaics area, cross-categorical mosaics area portion of the building. That is necessary to do now because those spaces have to be in place before the transition to the elementary school. We need to make space for those K through five learning communities by making this modification. And so, we're able to do that because there is a commons area kind of in the front of the building there that is not really being utilized, and it is currently under transformation, and I'll show you the photos of that here in just a moment. And that's really our one opportunity to make a reconfiguration impact to this building. It's going to look different naturally because all the finishes are changing. But this is a three-dimensional interior change that will really be a statement to the building that something has changed here, and it's moving the library media center to right off of the front door, and developed in a way that is similar to, in fact, we talked with staff in the district about what is being developed in the new facility so that we could emulate that kind of open concept design that is being developed in the new elementary schools. It really becomes a focal point for the school as you enter the school, and making that recognizable change. This is an artist rendition of the space, and the new finishes, the new branding that will go in place, the change in the age group, and you can kind of see how the colors reflect that in the furniture, and of course, the green branding for the campus. And this is an in-progress shot. So, this was photographed taken just last week of the progress. This part of the building is planned to be finished before the end of the semester so that it can be occupied as a part of the second semester. And yet another rendition of that, really trying to take advantage of the natural light of some clear story there that you can't actually see, or couldn't actually see prior to the revisions that we're, we're making. I'll just move through these amenities of that space. And for this, I'm going to turn it over to Greg Wade to talk about, there's a courtyard immediately off of the media center that we're also going to be improving. It's a courtyard that hasn't had any improvement done to it since probably 30 or 40 years, I'm guessing. And it is an excellent space for us to be able to kind of combine with interior architecture and create an outdoor learning environment for students.
Thanks, Jerry. So, just as those interior spaces, the media center, et cetera, are kind of hidden gems inside and really cool spaces for the kiddos, this is a nice exterior extension of what's happening inside, bringing us out. So, as you can see, we have a plethora of different experiences for the kiddos and staff out here, ranging from visual cues with shade and trellis structures that have some color transparencies that might cast some really fun shadows on the ground, and lush plantings. Some of it, you can see better in the plan, the amount of plant material that we'll be looking to get in there. Low maintenance, of course, but also a variety of growth habits and textures and colors in the plant material. And then the pavement material itself, combination of simple concrete pavements, and maybe some aggregate that gives you a nice crunch under your feet. So, a lot of different touch and feels and sights integrated into what we're excited about as a sensory garden opportunity.
Okay. And it is positioned off of the library media center, but it's also immediately adjacent to the categorical mosaics classroom suite and has direct access for it from that area. So, it's, it's really well-positioned in the school for maximum usage by the students to take advantage of that rehabilitated space within the building. I mentioned these spaces previously. I do want to talk about some other interior improvements that we're making. We will be adjusting the serving lines for age appropriateness. And this is a good just enlargement of the, I call it the shared use component of the facility. This is be the, the areas that most often get used after hours, and a great amenity for the school to make use of. And what are we going to be doing? This is an existing shot of the cafeteria, but it does need to be, the ceiling is high. It does need to be kind of transformed to help with some of the littles that are going to be in there. So, we plan to rebrand that space, bring some ceiling elements down to kind of reduce the height of that tall structure. Originally, as a part of the building, used to be a gymnasium or a gymnasium in the facility at one time, and was converted once upon a time to the And as a part of that, there's a before and after school care space that needs some love and care, and that will be also transformed. Again, this is just part of the makeover that the facility will go to become the Westfield Elementary School. All right. I'm going to turn it over to Greg, and he'll talk, walk you through the exterior parts of the project.
Thank you. So, existing aerial image here for you all to look at. What we're honing in on are site circulation and safety improvements from a vehicular and pedestrian perspective, as well as the playground opportunities that need to coincide with the elementary school. So, from the upper left, we're looking to improve the bus entry access points to the site very north of us into the large bus lot just north of the elementary, as well as start to carve out for a bus lot on the south end of the elementary. And then, a playground on the west side of the elementary, kind of where the detention basin is now. So, we're working through engineering there. And this is a rendered plan version, so you can see all the way from the top, improved bus access, parking opportunities adjacent to both the middle school and the elementary school, but improved bus circulation through the space all the way down to our playground that is buffered from adjacent land use with tree plantings and simple drives for parking for staff on the west side of the building. And then, as we go around the bottom there, the Phase One work that you've already seen, probably driven past the bus lot that's been built over the summer, as well as additional staff parking area there. And then, just northeast, just kind of right, upper right of the elementary school building, is the existing intersection that I did not mention previously, but the large asphalt area right off the edge of the existing intermediate school building to be elementary. We've really cleaned that up. Really worked hard to separate and clean up those intersections to make it more intuitive for the driver, make it safer for the, for anyone walking on the pathways there, all while maintaining our circulation and drop-off functions, very similar on the main entry side to the east or to the right of the building with the current function for drop-off, car rider drop-off being maintained, bus access on the very south end, and then due north of the new elementary school, a kindergarten through first grade drop-off opportunity there as well. Here's a glimpse of the Phase One work that you might have walked past, driven by, the bus lot that is out there striped, and the staff parking lot as well. Here's a rendering of this drive improvement, the Shamrock Boulevard, as it is at that northeast corner of the building. You can see the separation of what's the five-to-six-point intersection, really streamlined down to very intuitive crossings. The north side of the building showing you a glimpse of the kindergarten first grade drop-off loop, as well as the playground area to the northwest with a flex lawn and playground, ample hardscape play areas as well. Pivoting on around, looking east on the west side here, you can see the buffer and landscape treatments as we kind of hone into the playground, which is another important item. We worked very closely with staff and the design team to match and work with the play equipment very closely. And there are a few unique aspects to this playground, but we worked really hard to make sure we were tracking a very similar kit of parts across the district. Here's another little glimpse of the playground. I'm in plan view. There are shade structures. There are, again, a number of play equipment pieces, and the flex lawn in the upper left of the play area. And then, the playground itself, you can see, is a barrage of different age groups and opportunities, very strategically placed and coordinated with staff to help provide safe management and control while the kiddos are out there, all of which is contained by a perimeter fence area for safety and security.
All right. We'll wrap it up with a little discussion on construction phasing. And I think the one important thing to note with construction is we always separate our construction functions from the occupants of a building. So, it's a school first, it's not a construction site first, and we recognize that. And so, we always make sure that we're treating it as such so that you can operate as you need to educating students. The phasing largely, because it's a fully occupied facility, lot of the construction, the vast majority of it, has to happen during summers. And you can see there, kind of in simple terms there, which blocks happened summer of 2026 and which blocks happened in summer of 2027. Really, our first charge is to get those core learning communities established for the K through five students that will be districted here. And, and then, we'll come back and renovate the areas that the sixth graders will occupy during the transitional year in the following summer in 2027. Because the playground work is a pretty major undertaking, and there's some above-grade stormwater detention there that has to be moved below grade, that work does need to happen and begin this coming spring. So, during spring break, we plan to transition and begin construction in that area. So, the playground will be closed, and other arrangements will be made for those students at the end of the school year. But that is all to make sure that we have an age-appropriate playground in place by the start of the school year in August of 2026. Ultimately, all the work would be planned to be completed by the end of the summer, summer of 2027. Then in terms of site phasing, there's a lot going on in this plan here in terms of the different elements, just like inside the building. We have to carefully plan the outside of the building to make sure that we're not disturbing functions that must remain. I think the biggest thing here is the top-left four boxes there, 2026 work, including that spring break start for the playground. And then, the rest of the boxes on the plan, that work is largely summer of 2027. So, that's kind of the plan for working around the site. So, that concludes kind of our overview of the project tonight. Thank you.
Hey, Jerry. Thank you. Just for purposes, we, this presentation, we'll get it to Sean's in the back there, our website guys. So, it should be online tomorrow at the latest. And then, Jerry, or is your team going to hang around? Yep, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Board members, do you guys have any questions or anything? Is All right. You can send those questions to the board members and to Dr. Aether, as far as that goes. Now, we will now transition into the public comment portion of the evening's work session. This portion of the meeting is dedicated solely to receive public comment on the proposed rebalancing maps. We recognize that this topic is of great interest to many, many people in our community, and we appreciate your engagement. Our goal is to hear a wide range of perspectives in respectful order and manner. We ask that the community hear to the following guidelines. We were here to public comments for one hour. Each speaker, each speaker will have three minutes to share their remarks. The countdown clock will be visible on the screens to help you monitor your time. When your time expires, please be respectful to your neighbors who want to get up and talk to you inside that hour. Please remember, if you go beyond your allotted time, you will be using their time too. If someone has already expressed the point you intended to make, we encourage you to consider deferring your time so that additional perspectives may be shared. Speakers will be called up in the order of their comment cards that were submitted upon arriving in the building. We will now begin the hearing comments for one hour. I invite to the podium the first speaker.
Brandon Nels, and then- Brandon Nels, and then Mary Peers, you're on deck.
Mind if I take one second to try and fix this microphone?
Please do.
Do you?
Thank you. Brought tape. Look at you.
More dangerous, an engineer. All right, give me one second here. Okay. All right. I believe everyone in this room wants what's best for our students. The hours, the planning, the late nights, they all come from a place of wanting to do the right thing for our kids. But wanting to do the right thing and choosing to do the right thing aren't always the same. Because this decision isn't about boundaries or just attendance zones or optimal capacities. It's about what we're willing to call fair. And if it moves forward as proposed, we're saying that some students will start their journey surrounded by excitement, brand-new buildings, strong existing ones, wide-open fields, while others at Westfield Elementary will start in a hopefully finished half building, landlocked with limited space, without a clear sense of community, and assigned to one of only five public elementaries in the entire state of Indiana within 600 feet of a major highway. So we'll justify it. We'll say it's temporary, we'll say it's financially necessary, it's the right long-term move, it's our only option, it'll be just as good as any other school, and we can close any gaps in the plan along the way. But when we strip away all that language, that's not equity, that's convenience. What it's really saying is the risk of losing a bond rating, or risks to a future project, or taking the time to reevaluate alternative solutions with current data outweighs the risk of a child feeling forgotten. And kids notice. They may be resilient, but they're smart. They notice which schools get celebrated and which get explained. They notice when something feels like an opportunity and when it feels like a compromise. If you vote yes, we're teaching our kids that educational fairness is flexible when it costs too much, or it takes too long, or it's just too difficult to figure out, that some communities have to wait their turn, and that maybe next time will be different for them. That's not the lesson Westfield should be writing into history. Because equity isn't balanced on spreadsheets, or done with intentions, or fixed later. It's proven in the choices we make today. I know hard work's been done, and I know it seems like there are no other options, but this vote is about the truth. Progress that leaves one group behind isn't progress at all, it's just movement. And when you vote, show our kids you have the courage not to do the convenient thing, but to do the right thing, and demand a pause until there's a truly equitable plan for every school on day one. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon. Mary?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Dr. Mary Peers.
Jonathan Storey is on deck, just.
Sure. I'm speaking tonight both as a physician as well as a concerned parent. I argue that the current plan to relocate our children to the Westfield Elementary School poses potential and frankly inequitable health risks compared to every other elementary school in this district. Within our community, we have two starkly different realities. The modern campus with our open green space and new facilities, and the Westfield Elementary Campus, a building where the structure itself may pose risks to our children. Within the walls of Westfield Elementary, we face the potential of mold, asbestos, lead-based paint. You may be tempted to argue that these are non-issues. However, despite multiple requests, we have not received any documentation to reassure us. Where are the air quality testing results? Asbestos management plan? Previous abatement documentation? HVAC maintenance logs? Until this information is provided, we cannot rule out the increased risk of serious health problems for our children: respiratory infections, asthma exacerbations, and even neurocognitive decline. And the danger doesn't stop indoors. The proposed playground's proximity to busy highways is a non-modifiable health hazard. The EPA has established a clear link between high-traffic corridors and adverse health effects. This is especially true within the first 500 feet of the road. And the pollution levels don't fall back-to-back ground levels until you're 2,000 feet away. The proposed Westfield Elementary Playground is clearly well within that 500-foot danger zone near US 31. Our children are particularly susceptible to the damage caused by this constant air pollution. Specifically, asthma and respiratory issues, impaired lung development, lower cognitive functioning, increased risk of cardiovascular disease later in life, increased risk of cancers such as childhood leukemia. You are committing us to a school that by EPA standards is in a health hazard zone. Finally, another non-modifiable factor is the inherent safety risk of sharing a campus with a middle school and a high school. This introduces unnecessary dangers to our children. From the traffic safety concerns of inexperienced high school drivers cutting through our parking lots, to the higher probability of security incidents and intruder issues that can occur on a sprawling secondary campus. We must prioritize the health and safety of our youngest learners. Our district's asset protection should not supersede our children's health. Thanks.
Eric Schultz is after Jonathan.
Thank you, Mary. Good evening. My name is Jonathan Storey, and I'm the father of three Westfield students in the classes of 32, 37, and 39. I want to thank the redistricting committee volunteers for their time and effort. You did your best with what you were given. I'd like to remind the board of a few things. You told us our goal is to do this with you, not to you. That promise was repeated in every redistricting committee meeting. Yet the record shows that the maps and plans were already in motion long before public involvement began. Dr. Atha and district staff have openly stated the original maps were drawn by a demographer nearly two years ago. And during the July 22 school board meeting at about the two-hour mark, Mike Steele admitted it was based on bad data. However, these maps became the basis for everything that followed. The committee wasn't there to design options, it was there to pick from a narrow set of pre-built ones. And voting was used to create the appearance of consensus. But when all the maps are nearly identical, the vote doesn't reflect agreement, it manufactures it. The outcome was predetermined, and the process was a narrative exercise to create the illusion of community involvement. You recorded the committee's priorities, demographics and socioeconomic balance ranked number one, yet just a week later, you admitted the maps do not meet the goal of demographically-balanced schools, and redefine success to mean only double-digit percentages in all schools and avoiding over 30%. That doesn't redefine success, it's changing the rules to fit an outcome. The board approved $35 million contract with $12.6 million for renovation of Westford Intermediate into an elementary school while the committee was still deciding its future, calling that consensus is disingenuous. Instead of commissioning a new demographic study, the district relied on data that's nearly three years old. Dr. Atha, you called that data not great. A new study would have cost just $9,500 and taken six weeks. Now, we've done that study, and it's either complete or nearly complete, yet this board plans to vote in two weeks without adequate time to review the updated data. That's not just negligent, it's reckless. So tonight, I'm asking for honesty and accountability. Reassess this plan using current demographic data, because doing this with us means giving us a real choice, not a predetermined one. Westfield Intermediate School is the worst possible location for an elementary school. And finally, I urge the school board to listen to your constituents, all of them. It's been made clear that some members believe the voices of longtime residents carry more weight than those of us who moved here and chose to make Westfield our home. That sentiment is disappointing. Because next year, it won't just be the natives who vote, it will be all of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Eric. Eric's up. Then Maria is after Eric. Maria Fellows.
Good evening. My name is Eric Schultz. I'm a director of construction for a multifamily company. I'd like to address the lack of transparency with this board. I've emailed Brian Kelly with no response. My simple questions were, what does the rental consist of? Who's the GC? What is the cost of the rental? What is the contingency plan if the rental is not complete on time? Now, I would like to address the fact that the board is not listening to its consultants. It was brought up in the 7/22 meeting that the intermediate school is not the ideal spot for an elementary school. This has been echoed by several Westfield officials. When the consult, when we construct a project, we listen to our consultants. Another fact is that, another fact is you use COVID demographics for the entire plan, and you just received updated demographics. In construction, we like to use the proper information when building a job. In this case, you chose to move forward with a $35 million renovation in lieu of paying $10,000 for an updated demographic study, a study in which your consultants urged you to do. Once again, you ignored your consultants. I would also like to ask how you justify this building is equal to the other elementary schools. If this is about SES ratings or equality, I fail to see how you justify the school. You are using our kids to protect an asset. Find another use for this building. Carmel did it in Orchard Park. As far as schedule goes, the following projects did not meet schedule. So why do you think that you will meet the schedule of the Westfield renovation? Shamrock Springs, the middle school, Oak Trace Elementary Playground? If you can't complete a playground on time, how do you expect to complete a $35 million project over one summer? Thank you.
Thank you.
Molly G. will be after Maria.
Maria Fellows?
My name is Maria Fellows, and I'd like to speak about how the plan for Westfield Elementary does not align with the mission of the school board, the rebalancing committee, or the vision of Destination Westfield. Each of these guiding principles focuses on what is best for all of the students, our schools, and the future of our growing city, and this proposal falls short on all three. The school board mission states the well-being of students is the primary consideration in all decisions. Opening an elementary school in an urban area, on a high school campus, and next to a major highway, when all seven other elementary schools are in quiet suburban neighborhoods, is not equitable, regardless of how much money you pour into the facility, supporting the fact that it does not prioritize the well-being of the students who are being placed in that building. These children are being asked to bear the burden of a decision that overlooks them. At each rebalancing committee, members were told, "We want to do this with you and not to you." But for the families who are being moved to Westfield Elementary, this is being done to us, this is not being done with us. We are not upset about changing schools. In fact, I think most of us would have no concerns attending any of the other seven elementary schools in the district. We are pointing out that we are changing to a less desirable situation that is not equitable to the others. The Destination Westfield vision states, "Westfield is the top destination community in the state of Indiana," and goes on to say that, "Leaders are focused on preserving the hometown Westfield experience even as our city continues to grow." Westfield Elementary, as proposed, does not preserve the hometown experience. We keep hearing, "The building used to be an elementary school," but that overlooks how much Westfield has changed. 25 years ago, when that was an elementary school, that location wasn't urban, there was no major highway running through town, and our city was far smaller. Our leadership has acknowledged that this school is in the absolute worst location in Westfield to add a new elementary school. It's not where our population's growing, it's not where we need a school. It's bordered by a highway, a high school, and a large hospital. A true destination community invests in an elementary school where it's needed, not simply where a building happens to be available. We've also been told that converting the intermediate school into an elementary school is the best use of the building. But is it truly what is best for the people of Westfield? When comparing all eight schools, does Westfield Elementary reflect the thriving, forward-thinking community we've become? This proposal does not represent the Westfield we are today, or the future we're striving to build. It contradicts the mission of the school board and Destination Westfield. Before approving these maps, I ask you to return to the heart of your mission and put the well-being of every student and what's best for Westfield at the center of it.
Molly?
Yeah.
Molly G., and then Mike C.
Hello, I'm Molly Gorski. To the members of the school board, I am here to formally request that the next school board meeting on November 11 be held at the Westfield Elementary School Playground, the very location where you are forcing to send our elementary-age children under the current rebalancing plan. We believe that if the board experiences firsthand the environment surrounding the school, it will gain a much clearer understanding of our deep concerns. The Westfield Elementary School will be just one of six schools in the state, this close to a 55-mile-an-hour major highway. The other five are inner-city or rural. Westfield is neither. Elementary school children should not be placed in an environment where traffic noise, air pollution, and safety risks are heightened simply due to location. Let that sink in. We are moving our children, our five, six, seven, eight-year-olds, not for their safety, not for their education, but to balance a financial spreadsheet. That is not right, it's not fair, and honestly, it's heartbreaking. We are not asking for special treatment, we're not asking for more than any other family in this district. We are simply asking for our children to be safe. Parents have said again and again, we are willing to be moved anywhere, anywhere, just not there. We ask the board to meet us with these decisions, and we ask the board to meet us where these decisions have real consequences, on the playground of Westfield Elementary School, so you can personally see and hear what our children will experience every day. We believe that once you do, it will be evident that this plan must be reconsidered. The district should be embarrassed that this was even presented to us as an option. Every one of you was elected or appointed to act in the best interest of students. This is your chance to prove that's more than just a slogan. Because if you stand behind a plan that puts children next to a 55-mile-an-hour highway simply to fill a building with debt, then this board has lost sight of what education is supposed to stand for. We, the parents, will not stay silent, we will not back down, we will keep speaking up at every meeting, at every election, until our children are given a safe and fair education they deserve. Thank you.
Mike C., and then Stephanie Wies.
So, these maps are interesting, and let's talk about how we got here. Prior superintendent, who now works for Performance Services, who spoke earlier, this board had authorized over $180 million worth, yeah, Paul Kaiser works for Performance Services currently. So, and for the record, your lawyers have also said no conflict of interest paperwork was ever filed. These maps have been years in the making. These maps are a product of the inability of the board to manage the most basic financial responsibilities of the district. Mr. Anderson, who is a minor in economics, and Ms. Ogil are the financial chairs. Were there ever questions of how much money is being spent, where it's going, and how this debt's going to accrue over time? Or Ms. Larison, who's part of the Westfield Redevelopment Commission, to help our underprivileged areas of Westfield? Does it really make sense to put these shiny new schools to the incoming students while reworking an old zombie school for the rest? Or Ms. Willis, the at-large member and the longest-serving member? Your comments last meeting were not only unprofessional and distasteful, but truly show that you do not represent the city of Westfield as an at-large member. Given Moms for Liberty was one of your supporters in getting elected, you did not, you don't even practice the ethos of challenging government overreach and holding leaders accountable, but rather create a divisive us-versus-them argument. You will vote for this map out of spite for us, not out of any source of fact. And Mr. Atha has shown the most egregious actions during this. Not only relying on old demographic data and refusing the advice of several hired consultants on the July 22 board meeting, that the more current numbers should be used. You misled the public through your rebalancing committee, guiding them towards solutions that fit your goal, like swapping definitions of diversity in SES. 25% of your supposed incoming students are coming from 55-and-over communities, and creating false equivalencies to force people into buckets you choose. Your interactions with the community have been sinister, and using the opportunity for dialogue is an opportunity for you to create counterpoints. Like sending out separate emails to people you think will champion your plan to get them to speak this evening, then claiming your secretary sent it out without your knowledge is just an abdication of leadership. As a collective, you all have ignored warnings from several people, ranging from your hired contractors, your demographers, your mayors, your constituents, other administrators, and other paid qualified professionals. This is the worst location for an elementary school. You have even refused to factor in the most recent census- You have even refused to factor in the most recent census data. So yes, these forced maps are great because you all are household names, and you're in roles where they shouldn't be. And believe me, if you vote yes, you will be a household name come November.
Stephanie's up, then Ashley Lenninger.
Good evening, my name is Stephanie Wies. I'm a Westfield resident and a mom to three kids, currently attending three different schools in the district, one in middle school, one in intermediate school, one in elementary. I'm here tonight as a concerned parent of a kid that will go to Westfield Elementary if you approve the rebalancing plans. But the more I've learned about these plans, the more strongly I feel that this elementary school would not be equitable for any Westfield student. And if I wasn't... I didn't have a kid moving here, you would be hearing from parents of the kids who work. Dr. Atha, you said this about rebalancing on the Westfield website. We are reminded that this effort is ultimately about one thing, ensuring every Westfield, Washington, student has an access to exceptional and consistent educational experience, no matter what school they attend. I know we all agree with this goal. I know you all sitting up there agree with this goal. However, Westfield Elementary, for many reasons, is not equitable and not offering an exceptional experience when compared to the other seven elementary schools. There are many areas that stand out as inequitable, you're hearing about them tonight. I'm not going to repeat the things that other people are saying, as you requested. They're going to talk about the building, how the building is not equitable. I'm picturing my neighbor's cute little five-year-old, soon-to-be-six-year-old son, he's cute, but he's short, walking into that building that's been redesigned over the decades to be fit for intermediate school, older, bigger-sized children, and being met with a maze of hallways that are large. And it's not the same, it's not equitable to the other seven schools. Westfield, Washington Schools has excellent teachers and principals. Midland Elementary School principal was announced nearly a year ago. She's a proven, experienced elementary school principal who's had time to prepare for what's going to be happening in that school building. The Westfield Elementary principal, although not formally announced, is busy currently running one of the biggest schools in the district. I don't... I've yet to hear any plans for how you plan to equitably staff the school, Westfield Elementary. I do not have faith, unfortunately, based on the way this has gone, that it will be an equitable experience for our children. I won't talk about the logistical nightmare that is the traffic situation there. The plans that were shown earlier are not complete, they don't show what will happen when Westfield Elementary has after-school enrichment activities and releases kids at the same time as the Westfield Middle School and High School students. All of that to say, and I... The school board meeting in July is a great one, everybody should go listen to it. Listen to the consultant who asked them to consider a different location for Westfield Elementary School. Listen to what he said about this not being a good long-term perspective in light of the expected high school growth. You should go watch it. I'm asking you to vote no to any rebalancing plan that includes Westfield Elementary School opening at the beginning of 2026. Thank you.
Ashley, and then Christina Knapp.
I'm here to address concerns about the current rebalancing plan and its impact on the fifth-grade students at Westfield Intermediate School, both this year and next. It seems that the fifth graders transitioning to sixth grade have been overlooked in the planning process. These 800 students are at a critical point in their educational journey. They've just faced a major transition, moving from elementary school to Westfield Intermediate School with a larger student body. Now they're being told that they will be guests in the same building that will soon house K-5 students and will now be called Westfield Elementary School. This forced combination of K-5 and sixth-grade students creates numerous problems, especially regarding the lack of a separate wing for sixth graders, like I asked earlier. The floor plan presented at the October 14th school board meeting and today showed sixth-grade classrooms intertwined with younger grades and portables outside. The facilities will be stretched thin, and even the specials teachers may be shared, according to Dr. Atha. These fifth graders have also been living through construction in the building currently. The library has been being remodeled with loud construction noise, forcing the kids into one small corner for learning during their six weeks of library time. This will be the case for them next year as well, with more construction, let's be honest. The impact extends to extracurricular activities, which would be cut short or conflicted with car rider pickup times due to proposed staggered start times. But the biggest concern is that the fifth graders will lose their playground, starting in the spring. Recession is vital for their development, providing a break, outdoor air, and socialization. They get 10 minutes a day to run around and just be kids, we cannot take this away from them. Additionally, the current special schedule operates with rotating specials every six weeks. That means if a student has PE in the fall for six weeks, they won't have any physical activity for the rest of the school year, once construction starts on the playground. And with the loss of the playground and blacktop space taken away for portables, these 10- and 11-year-olds will not have any opportunity for physical activity during their long school day. It's clear that we are taking more and more away from these students, and it's hard to understand why it has to be this way. I want to briefly share the perspectives of two fifth graders who were eager to speak, but have been shielded from the full weight of these changes. "I look forward to recess every day. It's when I get to hang out with my friends and see people I don't normally get to see, who went to my elementary school. This year is the last year in my life I'll have recess." There is no recess after fifth grade. If you take away our playground in the spring to build a new one, where will fifth grade play for the rest of the year? You shouldn't build the new playground until summer, when school is out." Zoe, fifth grader at WIS. Another one. "Hi, I'm a fifth grader at WIS. I know for me and possibly for other students, school can sometimes be overwhelming. It's good to have a break, also a time to have fun is always good. Recession does both of these, and more. Without it, we wouldn't have a time for a break, a time to chill, to play sports, or for whatever you do during recess. Also, we know we won't have recess next year, but a sudden change like that isn't good for us." And I'm going to skip down because I'm running out of time. "I urge the board to consider the impact of this plan on all students in Westfield. Please prioritize the well-being of all students, ensure an educational environment that's stable and supportive. Please wait for the middle school to be completed, and find a solution that addresses the needs of all students in an equitable way." Thank you.
Christine is up, and then John Michael Barrett.
Good evening, and I apologize that I won't sound as well-prepared as some of my neighbors here. Everyone has covered the topics that I was going to cover, but I did want to add some observations about tonight. We got a lot of really wonderful diagrams and pictures and CGI-generated images about what this new school is supposed to look like, and that is such a great amount of information, and I wonder why it took a month of us begging and sending letters and making calls and writing emails in order to get this. This plan has supposedly been underway for three years now. Why are we just now getting this information? Why did we have to beg, over and over again, beg you to make this meeting in the first place, before we could get that information? I think it's because this is a bad plan, period. The points raised by my neighbors just reinforce that statement. Thank you.
John Michael, and then Caitlin Bond on deck.
Hello, thank you for the board to allow us to have an opinion. I hope you take these opinions in consideration as you move forward. I'd like to thank the committee as well for all their volunteer hours with being able to put plans forward. I'm speaking on behalf of members of the Monon Corner and Carimore Community, located west of Horton Road. I'm asking for consideration based off of the parameters that the committee was put forward as priorities of proximity to location, as well as reducing the free and reduced numbers in the schools, and as well as consideration as a lot of these are... Members of these communities had moved from out of state. And when buying and purchasing homes, and also considering child experience, the location to Monon Trail was a very pertinent one in choosing that community. My ask is that you consider moving the border further west and/or possibly south to include more area for Monon Trail. I think that would significantly reduce your numbers for free and reduced, which Monon Trail currently has the most dismal number comparatively to any other schools at 30%. I'm going to yield back the rest of my time, so many of the other passionate members can use it.
Caitlin's up, and then, sorry, Cory Rothman on deck.
My name is Caitlin Bond. I'm a Westfield resident, a Viking Meadows homeowner, and a parent of an Oak Trace Elementary first grader. I'm here tonight as a concerned parent, asking you to please reconsider the plan to turn the current middle school into Westfield Elementary. The district is preparing to spend tens of millions of dollars and commit to a 30-year plan using demographic data that is nearly three years old, even though new enrollment data is already available. Before we move forward, let's use the data we have now to confirm whether an eighth elementary school is actually needed. The process from the beginning has felt rushed. The rebalancing committee finished only weeks ago, construction timelines are tight, and let's be honest, there's always something that's going to be delayed. And when big decisions move faster, the data, accuracy, and equity suffer, and our children are the ones to feel this impact. Even if the data supports an eighth school, this location is not suitable for an elementary environment. I know this building was an elementary school when it opened, but our safety and learning standards have evolved dramatically. What worked then does not meet today's expectations. We don't seatbelt them in the past just because the buckle still clicks. I want to be very clear, we are open to change, as many as my other neighbors have said. This is not about us just wanting to stay at Oak Trace Elementary. We open the option for any of the other schools. We are just asking for our kids to be given the same equal opportunity learning environment as all the other children in the district. This is not just about maps, this is about equity. This plan intentionally creates a two-tiered system. Some kids will get to start their day surrounded by fields, nature, and the quiet hum of a real neighborhood school, and others will start their morning surrounded by asphalt, parking lots, and the roar of US 31. Even Jerry mentioned earlier that this is a complex project with the barriers. That's not equality, that's a different zip code of experience. We are forcing them into an urban setting, landlocked on a busy high school campus, surrounded by asphalt, parking lots, and traffic. We've seen diagrams tonight, but again, we all know there's going to be delays. One of my favorite movies, "Hope is Not a Tactic." So while we hope this is going to, you know, be done, I hope that my son is not a part of that hope, and I hope, you know, there's some additional reasons to prove that this is going to be done in a timely manner. I drove around this morning, I parked at the other elementaries, and I heard the birds chirping. It was peaceful. Then I went over to the middle school, which I did get lost. I spoke to the female who was helping direct traffic. It is a mess over there. I was in a concrete jungle, and all I could hear were vehicles flying by on 31 while I was lost myself. Even your own consultant on the July 22nd board meeting stood here and said, I quote, "We need to consider if Westfield Elementary is in the right place." The most frightening part is an analysis of public data shows it should be... It would be the second elementary school, second closest elementary school, I apologize, to a 55 mile-per-hour highway in the state of Indiana. The second. Is that a risk that any of us are willing to take with our children? What about your own children? We were told that safety was not one of the 10 considerations for the rebalancing committee. We were told, and I quote, "Safety was a given, but I'm afraid these facts prove otherwise." I'm going to ask for just a couple more words, I don't think my neighbors will mind. Our simple ask is just to vote no. Please pause, review the new data, and ensure the solution fits the evidence. If a new school is needed, let's choose a location that reflects our district's standards for our safety, equity, and long-term growth. A rushed decision may build a building, but a thoughtful one builds trust. Let's build trust in a future based on listening before moving forward.
That's Cory Rothman, and then Cory Starks on deck.
Thanks for listening here. I'm going to cut this down, given the great comments from my fellow community members. But I would just encourage the board and Dr. Atha to look at some data that I would want if I were you, making the decision to send our community's most vulnerable students to the Westfield Intermediate School building. I'd request an air quality test, comparing the air quality of outdoor spaces across schools, and read studies on air quality impacted children. Based on that data, I'd watch an asthma attack on YouTube. I've had to witness that with my now-second-grade daughter numerous times, due to air quality and other issues, it's a helpless and heart-wrenching experience. I'd request a transportation safety analysis that shows the traffic congestion and traffic routes into the heart of town and necessary high-speed travel, comparing the risk of accidents and other related incidents across schools. Not the onsite traffic as referenced earlier, the holistic traffic picture leading to the congested area of town versus the alternative of a school with a comparable safe traffic pattern of all the other schools. I'd request safety incident data on playgrounds at similar proximity to highways. You may not find too many playgrounds that close to highways, but I would request that data to see elopement and other accident-related incidents that occur in similarly situated playgrounds. Since there would be a variety of projects in more than just an elementary within this building, I would request a security evaluation of whether a larger building, where more people have access, is comparable safety-wise to a smaller building geared toward an exclusively elementary population. Thanks again for your time, I look forward to your leadership in coming up with a rebalancing solution to ensure moving forward, not backward. Thank you.
Cory Stark, and then Scott Thompson's on deck.
Good evening, Superintendent, staff members, members of the board. Tonight I'm asking you for courage. Courage to look beyond the short-term relief of a rebalancing plan, instead face the long-term consequences of how we invest our limited fiscal taxpayer dollars. In 2018, the district issued about $39.9 million in bonds, with roughly $17 million of that issuance used to renovate and expand Westfield Intermediate School. Six years later, today, we're about to issue with... Excuse me, with $14 million of that debt still outstanding, we're here again, preparing to spend a comparable amount to renovate the same building, this time to make it a temporary elementary school. This means we are paying long-term debt for a short-term fix, a cycle of construction that's unsustainable and fiscally inefficient, and just plain bad business. As was pointed out during the July 22nd, 2025 board meeting, that has been referenced, I know, earlier tonight, but I have a slightly different quote from Brent Height of CSO. "We need to make good decisions long-term." Does this make sense financially? By 2028 or 2029, we will need to start looking for more space in reference to the high school. The layout, the scale, and the design were never intended for our youngest learners at Westfield Intermediate School. Its proximity to the middle school and high schools only deepens that inequities between this facility and our other elementaries, as been noted already. Mr. Height went on to say, "We have options to not make quick decisions. To have a solution for the long-term conversion to Westfield Elementary does not appear to be consistent with that sentiment." It is also not consistent with one of the top priorities of the rebalancing committee of longevity of our districts. What's more, this plan sacrifices resources that could and should be directed toward other facilities and a necessary upcoming high school project, which will demand significant capital in the near term. By investing heavily in a temporary solution now, we risk compromising our ability to address long-term capacity challenges already on the horizon with community property tax revenue. This is a community issue, this is not a Viking Meadows issue. So tonight, I'm not asking you to vote down the maps or deny a need for rebalancing, I'm asking you to have courage to not adopt this plan. Pause, reassess, pursue more fiscally responsible, educationally equitable approaches that aligns with our future capital priorities. Courage means protecting both our students' learning environments and our community's investment. Please have the courage to say we can do better. I look forward to working with you towards this solution. Thank you.
Scott's up, and then Jason M.
All right, hi, Scott Thompson. My wife and I have three kids in the school district. We are Viking Meadows residents, and my comments will be reflective of that. I'm going to start, though, with a bullet point on the homepage of the rebalancing website. Under the strengths of the recommended maps, and that bullet, quote, "The configuration of the eight elementary school boundaries improves proximity between students and their assigned schools, which will ultimately allow for more efficient bus routes." So my comments are going to be focused on that proximity piece, and when you think about that as a consideration, when you take it and disregard it so much for a community like Viking Meadows, and I know we're not alone, there are other ones impacted just as much, it amplifies the other negative consequences. I'm going to frame those up in two themes, one being impact to families, two being home values. And when you think about the impact to families, Oak Trace, Shamrock Springs, Cary Ridge, they're all closer to Viking Meadows residents than Westfield, or than Westfield Elementary. It's the fourth closest elementary school to our community. What that means, impact-wise, that longer commutes, more disruptive to family schedules, no safe walk zones, and I'm glad we had the presentation earlier because it proved that point. It's the only elementary school in the whole district that not only has no safe walk zones, but no walk zones, period. There's also the fact that this is going to completely disrupt our youngest kids' bus times. They're going to be on the bus significantly longer than otherwise they previously would have been. When I shift to home value and the impact there, no less than seven studies proved that there is a direct correlation between home value and the distance to the school, in particular- in particularly the elementary school. Um, if you look at the proof points from that study and run the numbers on the distance that sits between, for example, the Viking Meadows residents and WES, that means a decline in home values of anywhere between 7% on the modest end to 20% on the, on the maximum side. So when you look at these considerations, and we talk about some of those considerations that get amplified when you take proximity and completely disregard it for community, was proximity considered? No. Was impact to families considered? No. Was efficiency in transportation considered? No. Um, and then lastly, if you think about the piece of, around home values, did that come into consideration at all? Absolutely not. So I would strongly urge this board to vote against the proposed map in a couple weeks. Thank you.
Jason's up, and then Laura Isler.
Hello, my name is Jason Mahelik. I have two children at Oak Trace Elementary, and I want to discuss a topic that's of great concern to all of us, and that's the issue of transparency. Many years ago, as an infantry officer going through initial training at Fort Benning, I was taught that there are three versions of yourself: who you think you are, who others think you are, and who you actually are. Said another way more familiar to everyone, perception is reality to some extent. The unfortunate perception I and many others have regarding this entire process is that it's being done for reasons that are contradictory, illogical, unsafe, and self-serving. My fellow citizens will or either have covered the first three points. I want to discuss the last one. Our public servants are obligated by law and an objective ethical standard to not use their respective offices for personal gain. In many instances, that duty of care extends beyond their term of office. We have laws prohibiting public servants from negotiating government or military contracts in their official capacity that result in personal financial gain for them once they leave. Does this prevent malfeasance from happening? Regrettably, no. And are there gray areas where everything is done by the letter but not the spirit of the law? Yes, of course. That does not mean we should be any less diligent in our standards or set our expectations any lower. Here's what we can objectively state: that Paul Kaiser negotiated a contract for the renovation of WES with his future employer, Performance Services, while he was still working as a superintendent. And he began working for Performance Services almost immediately after retiring as the superintendent of Westfield Schools. Ladies and gentlemen, this does not look or smell good. Given the hell-bent effort to push this plan forward at seemingly low costs, one can only surmise that there's a hidden agenda at work. I can only conjecture at this point because so little information has been shared with us on the details of the contract, and specifically its origins, and at what point Paul Kaiser agreed to employment terms with Performance Services. This I do know and can swear by, one way or the other, this information will come out. It will come to light through Indiana's Access to Public Records Act, conversations with public officials, including the governor and secretary of education, local news media, radio stations, and most importantly, on a door-to-door basis with my fellow Westfield residents between now and next November's election. And when all the facts are known, I sincerely hope that all parties involved can say that this contract was put in place without an iota of self-interest at work, and that everything was done with a child-first mentality. Thank you.
Laura is up, and then Trey Mendenhall.
Hi, my name's Laura Isler. I'm a Viking Meadows resident, a parent of two, one currently at Oak Trace, one at the Intermediate School. I also most recently sat on the rebalancing committee. I wanted to take a moment to highlight an article that appeared very timely in Today in the Indy Star. They list the top 25 best Indiana elementary schools for '25, '26. Oak Trace Elementary was ranked number seven. Congratulations, everybody. Notably, it was the only Westfield/Washington school to make the top 25 list. During the July 22nd school board meeting, Dr. Hoover shared the district's I-Learn results in celebrations. Trustee Bill Anderson asked a great question: how do we get our schools 2 through 6 up to the level of number one without lowering number one? Yet, with the current redistricting proposal, that's exactly what's at risk. Oak Trace, our top-performing school, is slated to be split with a significant portion of students reassigned to Westfield Elementary. This isn't how you raise performance district-wide. Oak Trace's success should be something we replicate, not redistribute. Let's protect it and use it as a model to lift all of our schools. Breaking apart a top-performing school community does not raise others up. It simply weakens what is already strong. Thank you.
Trey's next, and then Jamie Henderson.
Hey, guys, uh, I'm Trey Mendenhall. I have, uh, three elementary-aged kids. Uh, we've got eight more years of elementary school years ahead of us, so definitely invested in here. I'm also a former elementary school teacher. Uh, so you've heard a lot of specific reasons tonight why people are not happy with the current plan for Westfield Elementary. And I recognize that many people in the community are happy with the Destination Westfield plan as a whole because it's very necessary and it's got a lot of great things in it. What you didn't hear tonight was people upset about the other aspects of Destination Westfield or the inconvenience of change. Uh, tonight revolved around an obvious flaw of the plan, which is Westfield Elementary. And I don't think any of us realize this weakness in the plan until we put ourselves in the shoes of a family that's going to the school. Everyone who has dismissed our concerns or pushed back has not fully processed what would, will be like to send your kids to Westfield Elementary next year. And if we're being honest, those people are glad it's not them. I've heard the phrase multiple times that every school in Westfield is great, and I completely agree. Every current school in Westfield is a great place for kids to learn and teachers to teach. And if you told us our kids were being redistricted to any of the other seven options, we would not be here tonight. To make this problem as simple as possible, Westfield Elementary families are moving from a desirable situation to an undesirable situation. My brain has been focused on solutions for how this could, how this situation could be more desirable and equitable under the assumption that Westfield Elementary must happen. And delaying the opening of Westfield Elementary until fall of 2027 is a scenario that resolves several of our concerns. It allows all phases of construction to be completed before moving students in, similar to the rest of the buildings in El- in Westfield. It allows flexibility for construction crews to complete their work if there are delays. It allows sixth grade to move out of the building instead of being scattered throughout the school. It allows for admin to prepare for the opening of a new elementary school, similar to how we're doing with Midland. It allows more time to establish a PTO and parent support and mitigate many of the safety concerns mentioned tonight. We can spend a lot of time talking about past missteps or decisions, but we are asking the board right now to reassess this plan and explore the options to make all Westfield Elementary schools safe and equitable. The school board member ethics, uh, reads like this. A school, a, a board member should honor the high responsibility that membership demands. And the very first bullet point, probably the most important one, says, "By thinking always in terms of children first." So my question for you all is, is the plan for Westfield Elementary putting children first? Thank you.
Jamie, and then Rachel Fester.
Good evening. My name is Jamie Henderson, and I'd like to comment on the rebalancing process as it pertains to the establishment of Westfield Elementary School. I'm a parent of three students in the Westfield/Washington school community, but tonight I'd like to speak to you not as a parent, but as an educator myself. I work at another district in an older school that's undergone repeated remodels and reconfigurations, and I've seen firsthand how repurposing older facilities impacts the morale, health, and retention of school staff. My primary concern is that Westfield Elementary will be viewed as a less desirable elementary school compared to the others, and that will have consequences for equitable staffing and in turn for student outcomes. Westfield Elementary staff will be asked to work in a building where there are still lingering concerns about the appropriateness of its location and safety for elementary students, in addition to it being a remodeled building that up until this point hasn't really been talked about much publicly by the district, let alone celebrated like the other new schools have been. For example, there was no formal principal announcement or homecoming parade float for Westfield Elementary. This sends an unspoken message to teachers that this school is an afterthought, whether that was intended or not. As such, staffing Westfield Elementary may now be more difficult. Converting an intermediate school into an unfinished elementary school in a non-ideal location while two brand-new facilities open elsewhere risks making Westfield Elementary feel like the less desirable assignment. It may become harder to attract experienced teachers to voluntarily transfer, and therefore increase the likelihood of relying on involuntary transfers. And being an involuntary transfer can be really hard. Relying on that dynamic can erode trust, weaken morale, and affect teaching quality. This matters because morale and school climate are the foundation of a strong school. In addition, we need to remember the incredibly heavy lift we are asking of Westfield Elementary staff. They will be building a brand-new school community and culture from the ground up in a school facility that may not even physically be ready to receive them and is also perceived as less desirable or a place they didn't ask to be transferred to. Teachers are already burned out nationwide, and they crave stability and want to be valued. Beginning the year in a space that is viewed as less desirable adds stress at a time when we need to be attracting and retaining the very best educators. So tonight I ask the district to make plans for staffing the elementary school transparent and to answer this question: how will the district recruit and incentivize highly qualified staff who are excited to be at Westfield Elementary? If there is not a concrete plan for equitable staffing, I sincerely urge the board to consider exploring other options besides opening Westfield Elementary next school year. We deserve to have an equitable school experience from day one. Thank you.
Rachel, and then Laura Ronkel is on deck.
Good evening, everyone. I am Rachel Foster, and, um, tonight, honestly, I'm really exhausted. Are we all equally worn out by this situation? Does everyone feel stressed out? Can we just be honest about this together? So if I'm being honest, I came here and I was like, should I even keep fighting? Are they going to listen? Is this a fight we can win? And also, is it good for us to keep fighting about this? Is it good for our city? Is it good for the sense of confidence in our school system and, and, and division in our community? And I don't know the answer, but I'm also gonna tell you this. If my kids are redistricted to Westfield Elementary, I'm not sure I will send them next year. I have three children. I have three children who'd be moved, and up until now, my husband and I have always said that our family would attend Westfield/Washington schools unless and until they could not provide what our children needed. Last night, we talked for the first time ever about private and charter schools. The fact is, the school leadership has lost our trust. From the beginning, there has been a lack of transparency and communication about what to expect at Westfield Elementary. While Midland Crossing had plans and renderings posted online and a principal selected and celebrated in advance, Westfield Elementary was listed on Destination Westfield with simply the words "Coming Soon." It's important for you and our broader community to understand how the poor rollout of this plan has had a true human cost. I am not the only parent who has lost sleep and pushed aside other important responsibilities in order to investigate and advocate for my children. And you should know that if our children's school continues to feel like an afterthought, we'll find one that doesn't. Now we're being told that Westfield Elementary will be just as good as the other elementary schools. And while the presentation tonight was really impressive, you guys do great work, I still have concerns. Do I really want to put my kindergartner with a history of sinus, airway, and lung problems in a building next to a major US highway for six years? In case you were wondering, that six years is 1,056 days of his life. During that time, he will spend 6,505 hours in a massively oversized building that was not purpose-built for an elementary school. He will spend 528 hours on a cramped playground that is 100 feet from a major interstate. In my mind, this will never be truly fair and equitable. This decision was made for financial reasons pure and simple, but Westfield actually has more than enough resources to solve this problem. Despite all of our school growth, our property tax rates are expected to decline due to the continued influx of new families broadening our tax base. One of the very reasons we have so much growth is from families moving here to take advantage of our schools. But now we're looking at a situation where we might be killing the goose that laid the golden egg by tarnishing our excellent scholastic reputation. Adopting this plan will have economic consequences for years to come. Personally, I intend to live in Westfield for many years, and I would rather invest more money upfront with the goal of keeping long-term property tax rates lower. Thank you.
Laura, uh, and then Ashley Stark is on deck.
I'm Laura Ronkel. I'm a mom of three. Um, I live in Centennial, so, sorry. Sorry to break the streak, but, um, just hearing everybody else's sentiments and everything, um, I just want to a- address the fact that every map has Centennial going to Shamrock Springs. It is logical, I agree. But I bought my home 10 years ago before I had children, specifically to go to Maple Glen. And in every map, we are being sent to Shamrock Springs. I have a fourth grader, and the idea of moving her for just one year for middle school seems unfair. She's finally found her place and her home. And to pull someone away for a single year shows no benefit and only stress and heartbreak. And again, these are all things that we hear from committee members, online, through social media groups and everything, and the fact that they say, oh, well, they might be able to stay. So if that's scenario number two, that means that my fifth grader can stay at Maple Glen, but then my two second graders would have to go to Shamrock Springs, creating a hellish site, um, schedule for my family. I don't mind driving my kids to school if the bus isn't gonna pick up. So I am asking for you guys to consider a grandfather period. This is something that other committee members have said, that no one is considering it, it's off the table, don't talk about it. When I hear comments like that, all I'm seeing is you're looking at numbers, you're looking at spreadsheets, you're not looking at families, you are not looking at us, the people. And that upsets me. My sons have IEPs, and their biggest struggles are transition and change. So if you're gonna throw them into a new environment with new teachers, and also don't get me started on the teachers being thrown into a Yahtzee cup and being distributed around, because that's the other rumor going around with people, and they're also very upset with it. We have built such an amazing community. I'm originally from Louisiana. My parents and my sister moved here. My sister moved here specifically so she wouldn't have to send her kids to Louisiana public schools so she could come here because she knew how great the schools were. We have built such a great family. It's on the back of our jerseys, it's promoted everywhere, we are all rocks, we are all shamrocks. I love that. And when you're gonna just take everybody and say, you know, let's do this, let's do that, you're taking away that sense of family and showing zero respect and zero compassion. When you look at people saying that we're rock-ready, it's compassion, hard work, honesty, respect, and responsibility. We've heard that there's zero compassion going on today. Honesty has been apparently out the window with the transparency. Respect shows zero when you're not considering the families you're affecting. And of, again, responsibility. But right now, these actions don't reflect your words. Compassion means understanding that the change of the family goes through. Respect means honoring those roots that people have built here. Responsibility means standing by the commitments that this district has made when families chose to live here. I'm asking you from the heart to please consider a grandfather period and let families who meet reasonable expectations to be grandfathered in. Let our ch- children finish where they started. It's the right thing to do, and it's the choice that truly lives up to the values that what makes Westfield special.
Thank you. So Ashley, Ashley's next, and then Liz Welk on deck.
Thank you, I'm gonna give my time because everyone's already said so many amazing things.
Okay, so Liz. Liz Welk is next, and then, um, I think it's Christopher Palmer on deck.
I'm really short. Okay, you've heard really, really powerful facts tonight showing why Westfield Elementary School is not equitable. I want to speak from a little bit different perspective, a parent's heart. My husband and I moved to Westfield for its suburban feel and its great schools. When our oldest started kindergarten, we truly felt the blessing of being part of this community. When redistricting was announced, we were sad to leave our school, but we understood. We could see the benefit of attending any other school in Westfield. We could see the benefit of attending any other school in Westfield. Maybe the newly-built Shamrock Springs or the established Cary Ridge are hopefully staying at our beloved Oak Trace. All of these options are closer to our neighborhood. But instead, we were assigned to Westfield Elementary, a former intermediate school turned elementary. As a former elementary education teacher, I know how deeply these early years shape a child. This is when their love of learning takes root, when the difference a school makes can be seen every single day. So I started looking into what a day as a student would look like at Westfield Elementary for my two children. But there weren't any answers. The district website, no information. Parents had to dig and literally beg by email, phone calls, to find out what a day would be like at Westfield Elementary School, on August 18th, to be exact. And the response we heard: change is hard. People usually end up loving their school. Basically, quit whining, and you're going to move. Thirty-three percent of Westfield Elementary schools will be -- or students will be moving. But this isn't about resisting change. This change is not equal. My children, Harper and Mason Wells, and hundreds of other children, will take a far bus ride by either a hospital or a high school, depending which way they come. They'll arrive at school surrounded by concrete, not neighborhoods and green grass and trees and space. Later in the day, they'll play on a brand-new playground that, as we're told, will be the envy of the community. Sure, they'll play on that playground while breathing exhaust fumes and yelling over the roar of semis passing by. I stood there myself, talking to my husband, literally, loudly, so we could hear each other. Now imagine my five-year-old daughter, Harper, doing the same thing. This is not an elementary school environment, and this is certainly not a Westfield Elementary School environment. No matter how much money is spent on renovations, Westfield Elementary will never be equitable to the other schools in our district. So tonight, I am asking you to vote no in November, not just for Harper and Mason, but for every child that has to attend Westfield Elementary.
Thank you very much. Christopher Plummer, you'll be the last one for this evening. If anybody else got anything they want to send us, please send us. We have -- I can't remember who dropped it off at center office, but we have a lot of letters and emails also. But if you have anything else that you want to say or hasn't been said, please email us, the school board, and Dr. Atha.
We also have a link on the website.
And we have a link on the website that you can post your comments for everybody to see.
So one of the things I found interesting in looking up this information, which we got buried under a bunch of stuff, so hopefully parents will go out there and do some Googling on their own, but with Indiana being student funding and those funds going with them to the different schools, I don't know why this city couldn't invest in quality of school versus the quantity of schools. My son is a second grader, rode over here at Monon Trail. Our neighborhood is less than three miles away. The Monon Trail is sitting nearly at 900 students because the current school boundary lines did not account for growth properly and are sending students there from over three and a half miles away while Maple Glen is sitting there less than two. Then this rebalancing committee decides the best improvement on that is to keep sending students further away and then sending those like my son from his school less than three miles away to one roughly six. I don't know how you guys can put on the map or the website saying that this is dealing with transportation cost effectiveness and management efficiency. That's some examples of the lack of that. My son, our kids, they're not dollar signs and a percentage on a spreadsheet. They're not a dot on a map. What you are deciding is going to have a huge impact on them. With all the growth and diversity in Westfield, with all the elementary schools, every child should be able to attend a school close to their home. These kids need stability in their schools, not instability based on mismanagement of current boundary lines and a proposal to repeat it. It's a great disservice to them, their families, and the school itself. So fix the actual problem. Invest in equal quality of schools. Invest in our kids. Create these school boundary lines that make sense by using actual common sense. Thank you.
I want to thank everyone who took the time to speak tonight.
I appreciate it. Well, you guys stayed a little bit extra last time, so I just wanted you guys to consider that.
Can we ask how many comments are left?
How many cards are left? You guys might be lucky. There's quite a few, and everybody can have a chance. I mean, feel free to --
They care golf carts for three to four hours in this city. They care more about golf carts for three to four hours. They care about our children a little bit longer.
We do care about your children. If you do not have the opportunity to speak, or if you have additional comments, you can please share them with us or share them on the website. They will be read.
Your stock response back, your generic reply back? No, thank you.
Can I just ask if anyone was planning to read the middle school feeder maps? Nobody talked about the middle school feeder maps, and I think that's really important. Was anyone here planning to read about that?
Yeah. Yeah, let's hear it. Please hear about the middle school feeder. We haven't heard anything about that.
We've not. We've heard about Oak Trace and Westfield Intermediate School. You are 100% correct. And Monon, thank you.
How we're living in Shamrock Springs, that was sent out to the whole community.
On behalf of the board, I want to thank everybody who participated in the comments for the students and the community.